Okay.
Sarah's making messes over there.
I'm glad you're here.
Oh, yeah, it was interesting.
Yeah, no problem.
Is that what he's gonna be cooking on?
That's adorable.
Yeah.
It's six thirty. If everybody would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, do you call the roll? Here.
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 If there are no additions or amendments to this evening's council regular meeting agenda for October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the agenda will stand as presented. And is there a, I would like to accept the motion to approve the council work session and meeting minutes from October first.
Second.
Ms. Udeli.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson. Ms. Harrow. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Most passes five E's to zero A's are approved this evening. We do not have any visitors at this moment, but we have a packed house and a special event for the Village of Plain City. We are getting ready to swear. Okay. We, we can go, well, we'll do, we'll do this swearing in and then come back to visitor section if that's okay with everyone. Okay. We are to, I've got, we're in our first female police officer for a long time. So I'm gonna let Chief McKee, since he stood up as well, to introduce.
Well, before we even start with that, I would like to introduce Ryan Holder, the council. They haven't met him yet. This is Ryan here. He actually just started the Police Academy October first, so he started before the other council meeting, or after last council meeting, so he didn't get to come in and introduce himself. So he's actually, sorry, he's actually Plain City resident. He's in Plain City, most of his life graduated from Johnson Oliver. So he's actually in the academy, what, the second one or two weeks now? So anyhow, just wanted to introduce Ryan. Last, if you guys don't remember Haley, or Haley, sorry.
Wow, you're changing jobs.
She was in here almost seven months ago, and I says, I promise she'll be back. What's she gonna do? She graduated the academy. She did everything that she was supposed to do to be a police officer. She's like Mayor was saying, she's probably our first female officer in twenty-five years. She actually wasn't even alive when we met.
Yeah.
So anyhow, her family's here, uh, support her and everything, so anyhow, was, was the mayor good support.
Bill Kess here, see everybody can see you. Okay, if you can say the right name. I am in focus, I believe, Rosa. Just all in clear or firm, just all in clear and firm. That I will report the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution and the law of the United States of America.
The Constitution and law of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Plain City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Plain City.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will discharge the duty of police officer.
Will discharge the duty of police officer.
Congratulations.
The most important part of the, who's your grandfather father? Okay, Don, you wanna come on real quick? Don, this is Bailey's, uh, grandfather. He gets the honor of him for badge on her. Oh, where you come in? This is the badge.
Nice Monday. On behalf of the Village of Plain City, we're so glad to have you joining us in this evening. There it is too.
Sure. Aaron.
That's on the air.
Get there.
All these officers come up around the table.
Yeah, yeah. Not pictured, Aaron Lewis.
I didn't realize we had so many undercover.
Yeah, I know.
All right, ready? One, two, three, four, five, six. Don't do family picture in here or you're gonna upset me. Okay, so we have the picture. Council of. Your main decision. Ready? One, two, three, four, five, six, look here, one, two, three. Thank you. One, two, three.
Sir, the mayor, we're having cake and stuff on here, do you have some of my partners over there? You don't want to stay.
Hey, 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 hey. Bring this shit down.
D five two, it's a Z five, it's older, probably just five years old. It's got a fuse, like, set. Fuse, five. I'm gonna focus. For still photography, it's fine. Dismissed.
Okay, now, um, we will enter our visitor section portion of the meeting, so Ms. Scott, you don't want to, you don't want to talk. Okay, okay. Is Mr. Dryer any other visitors? Okay, just making sure, okay. All right, moving into our report section, uh, the last couple of weeks been working on the community caravan, um, event, so might be had our second, uh, day meeting, so it was off the western side of Plain City, again, just like opening areas, um, that are easy for people to gather, so we had several, um, people from other neighborhoods in town come over and join at that Madison Meadows Park, and, um, really good to have the school district along and, uh, Chief Adams, Fire Department, and, uh, Chief McKee, so thank you to council members for popping in and staff members, again, that is, I think it's a great way to really get out and interact with our residents and answer questions and try to answer them, they're not going on the community forum to answer their, their questions. Um, also working on, uh, communications with the, uh, RICO, that was the previous few weeks and everything of, um, announcing that, so basically, um, also, we'll have to eventually wear the letter shirt, but I will choose that the end of October because it went to, uh, disdain, uh, Ms. O'Grady's swearing in process, so also, thank you to everyone who donated for Battle of the Cans, we were super close in our request, I think our total was around nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight, London had around eleven thousand canned, i- or items donated, so even with their corporate sponsors, um, we were very close then in winning that competition, but it's all for good, so all those items will go to, hopefully, in turn, um, for the Plain City Food Pantry, so with that, I will, move on to Ms. Lupton, our village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Steph has been, uh, having a great time participating in the community caravan, and I just urge all of our residents to check out our website for more information on things like the aggregation on the ballot, um, the stormwater utility, RICO, all the big things that have been happening. We're also doing, uh, live video on Thursday morning at ten thirty about aggregation, um, it will be recorded, if you have any questions for you, want, um, answered during that, um, conversation, you can submit those ahead of time, and we will make sure that those are answered and then posted afterwards. Um, if you drove here tonight, you probably noticed Perry Pike is being paved, that should be wrapping up hopefully tomorrow, if not Wednesday morning, um, also going on is the forty, US forty-two and the West Avenue intersection improvement, um, so we're really excited to finally get that kicked off, and that should be hopefully completed within the next couple of months, and then, uh, remember that Fall Fest is this weekend, Saturday at Pastime Park from two to six P M. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Lupton, um, any update from, uh, Ms. Sonne? Okay, and Chief McKee is out of council chambers at the moment, so just excited to have our newest police officers, um, for the community, so very exciting times. At this time, we will go into discussion items, and our first item, um, the Mental Health Recovery Board of Madison County, so with, I know they, yes. Yes, you're allowed to come up to the podium, and I know, um, I met Mr. Kemp at the Madison County State Board meeting, and so he asked if he could come and talk to council, and, and here he is this evening.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, and Plain City for having me up here. Again, I'm Adam Kemp with the Mental Health Recovery Board of Clark Green in Madison County, um, so we're the governmental entity that plan, funds, and monitors, uh, mental health and substance use services, uh, for those three counties, um, and I'm really glad there were some reports in the middle there, so I didn't have to follow up the, the cake and the swearing in, I was excited to see the, uh, swearing in on the agenda, because my previous life, I was actually in law enforcement as a police officer and detective for like twenty years, and I've been doing this for about three, so, uh, very exciting to see someone start their career. So the reason I'm here today is there's a renewal levy gonna be on November's ballot that's in Madison County for, um, for mental health services, uh, so this is a renewal, there's no new taxes, um, the last one was passed ten years ago, um, it's sixty-seven cents a month on a hundred thousand dollar home, so, uh, we hope that, uh, we can gain some support from, um, from Madison County residents to, to vote yes for this. Um, all the dollars that are collected to stay in Madison County, um, or with Madison County residents, uh, they don't go to, to any of the other counties, um, and some of the cool projects we're doing, um, we're working with the Madison County Sheriff's Office to embed, um, clinicians, uh, some crisis workers with them, we got a big federal grant to do that, leveraging some of the, um, the levy dollars that we have here, um, and the hope for that is, we have the jobs posted, hopefully by the end of the year they're hired, the hope with that is that, um, as the chief knows, uh, they go out on a decent amount of crisis calls and don't have the time to sit and build a rapport for two hours and connect people with resources, so that's what these folks will be able to do. Yes, they're gonna be helping the individual crisis, but it's also gonna, uh, hopefully stop taxing our, uh, you know, Madison County nine-one system, the emergency department, the jails, you know, all those type of things, so that's just one cool project, um, that we're doing with this, uh, and we'd like to continue doing. Um, I have signs, I have more signs out there, I don't know what's allowed, if I'm allowed to pass this out or leave, leave stuff here, but.
Leave it with Mr. Dryer and then we.
Awesome, but there's all kinds of information here, and. Also I have, uh, Mr. David Doom, he used to be a Madison County Commissioner, or Commissioner, he sits on our board now, so I'm a staff member with the Mental Health Recovery Board, and, um, he needs to go on our volunteer board, so, thank you for having me, is there any questions about the levy, or anybody wanna tell me, they already voted yes? I already early voted yes, is that right? All right, well, again, thank you very much, Mayor, Council, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next topic is committee term length amendments. Mr. Dryer?
So as councils, where there's several motions on council's agenda, this is actually the first of two meetings where there'll be motions, uh, where there's an appeals and the personal war of appeals is to be following the next council meeting, will be parts of the committee and tree commission, so in a lot, and according to the law of standardization policy, staff and council believe that it has solid, it will be proven to standardize the committee length, so all councils are going to amend the term length of existing members to end on December thirty-first on the year in which they were originally set to expire. Um, after the October meeting, all committees, commissions, and boards, after the October twenty-seventh meeting, all committees, commissions, and boards will have a standardized term length moving forward, and as you see on the council's agenda, new appointments will also have that December thirty-first expiration date, the mental health year of staff and council, the mayor to figure out vacancies and keep the, uh, group or community commission full, um, if you have any questions, happy answer.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer, I think that's pretty standard and nice to have everything, um, consistent, and so that way we don't have any one-offs like a September, um, ending, and, um, I don't have any questions. Okay. Uh, CRA agreement and transfer.
Yes, um, also on tonight's agenda is Resolution fifty-one twenty-five, um, this is for the property two fifty-one West Main Street, um, it was formerly the Rialto Theater. The CRA has been in place for several years, um, but no property taxes have been debated to date, it recently transferred solely to one of the previous owners, um, so they are requesting an extension, um, ORC does allow the transfer of CRA agreements with the approval of council, um, and this will extend the deadline for completion.
Does it reset the clock?
It does not reset it, but I believe we changed it to July first, twenty-twenty-six, and then, it was previously July first, twenty-twenty-four.
So next summer?
They at least have to start the program.
Then twelve months.
Okay. And twenty-twenty-six budget?
I have a presentation, I'm gonna stand up so everybody can see.
Sure.
Um, I wanted to provide a third quarter report and, um, an introduction to the twenty-twenty-six budget, as we're in October already, it's hard to believe, um, personnel and finance heard this report, the numbers have been updated a little bit, but, um, yeah, we're getting ready to finalize the budget in the last part of the year, so here today, our general fund, um, is looking strong, the income tax revenues, um, we're already a hundred percent estimated collected already, um, it's four percent over, that's a hundred twenty-nine thousand, so, you know, we're not working with millions and millions of dollars, but it's still definitely trending strong and we'll, um, correct the forecast for next year to better, uh, budget that. Um, we've collected forty-four thousand dollars from the West Jefferson Building Department, um, as part of their contract with us to do the building inspection, personnel expenses were at sixty-seven percent of the budget spent, we're seventy-eight percent through the year, there's always a little bit of a lag time, so that number's pretty good, um, for the year, um, and the revenue is outpacing expenses at this point, um, we do still have some encumbrances that'll be paid before the end of the year, but we're right on track with our general fund. The park fund, um, continues to be strong due to the campground revenues, um, two hundred seventy-three thousand so far this year, and it will still have a strong year in balance, so, um, if changes are made for twenty-twenty-six and we see any, um, changes in the reservation system, we'll still be able to make it through a year, um, with a strong park fund. The rec fund does still need a transfer from the general fund, um, but that balance is as expected year-to-date as well. Police fund, um, the revenue from the property tax levy was very accurate, um, so that those numbers all make sense, there's a slight change tonight in the supplemental budget for, um, the additional person that we were able to get into the cadet training, we have to update the personnel services a little bit, um, and the remaining expenses are largely salary-based, um, but this fund is on track for the year. Street fund, same thing, uh, most of the revenue is from a transfer end, largely salary-based for the rest of the year, um, and we do have one open position, we've been kind of holding off one, uh, but it's about to be snow, plough season and everything, so we're gonna start that hiring process now, um, the budget can handle it and it can handle it next year as well. So just a reminder in the budget timeline, how we've got the staff, um, council requested any input, um, we've had those meetings, personnel and finance has seen a first look at it, um, we've spent time updating the general fund balance forecasting tool, we are in the process of finalizing the budget and the budget documents, um, tonight's the first kind of highlight of it, um, and also the next few weeks, finishing the final budget document with all the details, um, the sales sheet and the, the easy-to-read, um, cover, and then the goal would be into November and December, uh, read the ordinances passed the year in budget. So it, the twenty-twenty-six budget, um, is again a reflection of council's goals, um, we have updated some of the sub-goals, but the overall objectives have remained the same over the last couple of years, which helps steer the budget. Goals include increasing connectivity, improving and expanding public spaces, focusing on smart planning, increasing resident safety and satisfaction, and just developing the organization in a professional way, so these are our guiding principles for everything that goes into the budget, to make sure that it falls into one of these, uh, categories. There's just one more highlight on the general fund, um, you can see over the past couple of years, it's kinda hard to see, I can sit and thought afterwards, but in the past few years, um, revenue has been height, slightly higher than budgeted and expenses have been slightly lower than budgeted, um, we will be estimating per our, uh, forecasting tool a ten percent growth in income taxes for twenty-twenty-six, um, which helps bring up the, the revenue, um, but of course expenses grow, salaries grow, transfer outs grow, so it should probably trend the same next year. So a few highlights from our operation, uh, operations budget for next year, um, we wanna continue the business support programs, um, reduce the community grant program, but still have a, um, a small bucket available for local sponsorship, things like the Chamber and people that we like to support locally, um, we'll talk a little bit about it more, but an additional staff, um, count for a code compliance officer mid-two thousand twenty-six. We're going to budget for transportation planning, um, we know one sixty-one with all of our meetings with ODOT, they're going to expect us to start buying into what the overall, um, improvement plan looks like, um, we're spending money on forty-two to make sure that that is in place for grants and as developments come online, um, to make sure we have our, our plan in place, and then as those things come online as well, um, with all of the talk about you can't go four lines down to two lanes down to our downtown, what does it look like to get around Plain City? So these are really long-term, um, programs, but I think it all starts with a plan and taking all the data into account, so there's money set aside for all of that next year. Um, we recently updated the refuse and recycling contract, um, so it was a slight increase to account for the revenue and then expenses, um, that's just a tax through cost, and then we'll be allocating money to support the twenty-twenty-six America two fifty, some equipment continual event. Organizational, um, staff is proposing a three percent merit increase available at the time of employee evaluation, health insurance, our preliminary numbers are not good, um, we're working on hammering those out, seeing what our options are, um, before we finalize that budget, we put a large placeholder in, um, but it looks like if we stick with our health insurance, it'll be a large increase, if we go out to bed, it'll still probably be some sort of increase, it just seems to be the reality right now. Um, we are currently writing the property maintenance code, um, with the goal to roll that out in the springtime, um, which means we need someone to enforce it in mid-two thousand twenty-six, so that additional headcount, um, to support our department, it's budgeted for, um, fifty percent of the year in the general fund. The police department, um, we have cadets in training, uh, we met one of them tonight, he has to start in October, we expect another cadet to start in January, and that will be proactive in solving the twenty-twenty-six staffing requirements, however, we'll always monitor that number of housing units being built and make sure that we're within the, the safe ratio, um, the police levy is coming in as expected, like I said, it does take a transfer from the general fund, um, and another highlight would be that we're starting to use those police impact fees, and we bought the tornado siren this year, next year we are proposing to buy it as speed trailer and speed signs, um, that's one of the top resident, uh, feedback things that we get is that they're speeding everywhere and sometimes it helps to visualize, so those are expensive, but it's a good use of the impact fees. Parks Department, like I said, um, we're adjusting the revenue down, um, to see what that impact will be, um, and then we also would like to kick off a parks master plan focusing on Pastime Park and RICO, and proposing to fund this from the park impact fee, um, which the balance is growing, so we need to start using this fund, but I think this is a great first step to use those funds. Lot of capital projects, um, and I'm working on a prettier document to, uh, show this with the, the final budget, but the depot splash pad is in engineering, we're hoping to get that out to bed, um, this winter, the building marketplace continues to be engineered, taking a little bit longer than I want, but I think we're, we'll still be able to pull them off if I can get the engineering to get done this, this winter. By continual park, um, we'll enter phase two plans, the phase one plans are being presented to, um, the public in November, um, so after that input, we'll move into the stage two, um, with ODOT, that's the ODOT left project. The Public Works Department needs, uh, one-time work truck replaced, um, we're band-aiding, band-aiding the current one, um, we need to, like, wouldn't buy a new one-time work truck, it's very versatile, it could be used for snow plowing or pickup or all kinds of things. Looking at bath time, or bathrooms at Pastime Park, um, near the concession stand, um, I have preliminary sewer costs for that, and I'm just waiting on building costs, so I put a placeholder in that to make sure that's feasible for next year, um, and then we'll work with our partners to make sure it's what they want and what everybody can need. Um, the Public Works Garage expansion, they just need more storage down on Central Avenue near the wastewater treatment plant, um, so we're proposing a pole barn type of structure. The street paving project, um, over the last couple of years has been great, we've been able to fully fund that with about three hundred thousand dollars, um, and that all tied in with Shepherd and Converse, after the reconstruction is done with the sidewalks, the storm and the water lines, the streets will need repaved, so we'll start there and maybe, uh, through the village that we can, talked about the park's master plan, next year we'll have the addition of the stormwater.
Fun.
So we'll have rolling out expenses from that, and they'll go to Shepherd and Converse first, um, as well as planning for the next stormwater project. Uh, we wanna continue the path down Darby Creek, um, on the east side of the creek from the new shelter house, we wanna continue down through the, the, um, bridge, and then crosswalks at half hour and Smucker Park, so a lot of projects we've been waiting for a long time, um, they're kind of smaller, most of them are smaller, but, uh, of them are smaller, but ambitious, but I think we can get all this done, nothing too Talked about the addition of the stormwater capital fund, we'll see that revenue and expenses this year. We're going to continue the transfer to the land acquisition fund and build that balance. And then as always, we're paying attention to the state property tax ballot initiatives. Property tax goes away, we're going to have some tough conversations in the next year or so, as our police department heavily relies on the property taxes. The next steps, these are just some highlights, I want you all to think about it. I'm going to finalize the full budget document in the next couple of weeks and then distribute that to council for further discussion in the first reading November 10th. And then hopefully second reading and adoption November 24th or into December if needed. That's all.
Thank you.
The question on the Converse connector, that means Converse Road, that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, that's just...
Through our commercial business car, okay.
Yes.
Yes. Any question, Ms. Lefton?
Do you foresee being awarded since you're distributing it in November? Or how do you want to proceed? Because I think council would probably need some time with it before we have like the real...
Yeah, I'm going to try to wrap everything up for the next two weeks probably. I won't be at the October 27th meeting because of national conference.
That's okay.
But then, yeah, we can either do an old session or another one, it's whatever.
Yeah, I think we'll most times if it's available, we've had the presentation, we have the high level section where we've seen it.
Personal finance.
Personal finance. Once we get the actual detail, then we kind of can come and instead of making them go through, explain it all to us and just if we have questions or feedback, give it then. Obviously, in the meantime, feel free, if you have direct questions for Haley, just go ahead. I think for me, some of the biggest things are just timing on the capital, we're phasing those in throughout the year and through the hiring and when we're phasing that in. But it always seems as if we're more conservative in nature than we need to be, so I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, well, let me know if anything comes back in a little bit. Thank you, Ms. Lefton.
Thank you.
We have a series of public hearings that we are about to go through. Public hearing for ZZ-25-14 Amendment of the Codified Ordinances, Chapter 1183.12, Fences, a Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code. I will now open the public hearing for ZZ-25-14 up, open, excuse me, at 7:03. Is there anyone who would like to wish to speak upon this? I will now close the public hearing for ZZ-25-14. Public hearing, RZ-25-2, rezoning of 57.91 acres at 0US42 parcel number 18-0001173 from Restricted Industrial District I-1 to Planned Unit Development PUD. The public hearing for RZ-25-2 is now open. And would anyone, those who wish to provide public comment may do so at this time?
Really just here to answer any questions if there would be any, but we've had a couple of sessions in front of you all, so...
Sorry, Mr. Mc...
Yes.
I think you'd have to give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we're in a public hearing now...
I've only done this about a thousand times in my life, so I'm sorry. Dwight McCabe, 7361 Curry Road, Plain City, Ohio.
Thank you.
Now you can.
We've continued to evolve the project, we've had lots of activity, frankly, there's tons of interest in what we're doing out there and we actually have layers of intent and contracts on much of the development today. So it's very ripe, we've had dialogue with Mid-Ohio, that seems to go really slow. That's kind of the one impediment that's ahead of us. We've talked to traffic study folks and your city engineers and your staff and it's been lots of dialogue and I know there's some upcoming additional dialogue with you all to kind of put the development plan, the development agreement to rest, but if you had any questions, we're happy to answer. Nope, thank you.
I will now close the public hearing for RZ-25-2. Public hearing, RZ-25-3, rezoning of .65 acres at 370 North Chillicothe Street, parcel number 18-0001167.0010 from Restricted Industrial District I-1 to Planned Unit Development PUD. The public hearing for RZ-25-3 is now open. And given that there is no further public comments, the public hearing for RZ-25-3 is now closed. And now we have a series of motions from what Mr. Dyer had discussed for our courses and commissions to all line on the December 31st of their respective year. So motion to appoint Nicholas Oler to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term to expire on December 31st, 2029.
So moved.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. Motion to amend the term length of Zachary Robbins on the Board of Zoning Appeals to expire on December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. To amend the term length of Diana McCoy on the Board of Zoning Appeals to expire on December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. Motion to amend the term length of Jamari Hogan on the Board of Zoning Appeals to expire on December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. Motion to amend the term length of Becky Atchison on the Personnel Board of Appeals to expire on December 31st, 2029.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sims.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. Motion to amend the term length of Sonia Walker on the Personnel Board of Appeals to expire on December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. And to reappoint Derek Gibson to serve on the Personnel Board of Appeals with a term to expire on December 31st, 2031.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Motion passes five aces to zero nays. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance 37-2025, approving the vacation of a portion of Dry Street within the Village of Plain City. I would accept a motion to approve ordinance 37-2025.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
No.
Mr. Sims.
Yeah.
Motion passes four aces to one nay. Second reading, Resolution 48-2025, accepting the conveyance of real property located at 8115 US 42, Plain City, Ohio, to the Village of Plain City.
Motion to approve being Resolution 48-2025, accepting the conveyance of real property located at 8115 US 42, Plain City, Ohio. Plain City.
Second.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Resolution 48-2025 is approved, five aces to zero nays. Moving into new business, first reading ordinance 38-2025, amending the codified ordinances, Chapter 1183.12, fences, a Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code. First reading ordinance 39-2025, rezoning 57.91 acres at 0US42 parcel number 18-0001173 from Restricted Industrial District I-1 to Planned Unit Development. First reading ordinance 40-2025, rezoning .65 acres at 370 North Chillicothe Street, parcel number 18-0001167.0010 from Restricted Industrial District I-1 to Planned Unit Development First reading ordinance 41-2025, approving a supplemental appropriation of funds and amendments to the Village of Plain City 2025 budget and waiving the second reading.
Motion to waive second reading of ordinance 41-2025.
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Second reading is approved.
41-2025.
Second.
Ms. Diller.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
41- ordinance 41-2025 is approved, five aces to zero nays. First reading, Resolution 49-2025, authorizing the sale of village property. First reading, Resolution 50-2025, authorizing the disposal of village property no longer needed for public use. And first reading, Resolution 51-2025, approving the transfer of a community reinvestment area agreement to the new owner of property and authorizing the execution of an assumption agreement. And I would accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.